I was busy trying to call my cell phone.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call Amin to order. It is Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which makes us safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of reports received and filed. What have you been doing?
Going all night.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got Saw Waste Management District Advisory Board Grant Evaluation Meeting today. If we get out of here in time. Thursday, we've got Communities, and it'll be over at the Sheriff's Meeting Room, seven, or no, I'm sorry, that one's at the Chamber. Extension Meeting Thursday evening, Lions Meeting Thursday evening, East Side Business Association, which will be at the Sheriff's Meeting Room Friday morning, 7:45, and the Cole County Historical Society Golf Tournament Friday. Are you representing?
I'm not historical.
I'll leave that one alone.
Yet.
We can put plates on you.
Okay. I'm going to put a plug in for the News Tribune moving to their new office, and they have, I don't know if they're going to serve coffee and donuts on the street tomorrow, or just stop by and see their new location on Capitol Avenue, right? Okay. You mentioned the Communities, West Side Business Association on Thursday morning as well, and next Monday, I'm going to make a presentation to the noon, the Monday noon Rotary Club.
Well, last night in Rustville, we had the high school scholarship awards we had there, so I gave some money to them. Tonight, I have the Sons of Union Veterans Meeting. Yeah, Thursday's Communities. Also received an email from Ann Bax, the Cole County Coad, which is disaster, is 5:30 Thursday night at the Soybean Association. Friday and Saturday is the Shelby Fest, so come look at all the cars. Monday is National Nurses Day, so I think we're doing ice cream for the nurses, just so you guys know.
Cool.
And then Monday night, I have the Historic City of Jefferson, Thomas Lawson Price Society Meeting, so that is all I have. I'm going to do an ad right really quick. This is the Annual Sheriff's Barbecue, Tuesday, June 4th, at the Fairgrounds, so tickets are available for everybody who wants to come. And then I want to introduce a special guest. We have Taylor Blackwell from Senator Hawley's office. Do you want to say anything, or just?
No, happy to be here. Glad you all wanted me to come and introduce myself, and just want to listen to what's going on in the county today.
Oh, I think you're really going to be impressed.
[laughing].
Okay, we will move on. Bids and contracts. Bid award, 2024 Asphalt Overlay Program, 2024-501-1.
So, we opened bids on Friday, April 12th, and we had two bids in Higgins Asphalt, actually red low. But due to quality concerns in the past, Public Works is actually recommending the contract be awarded to the second low bidder, Jefferson Asphalt. The bids involved are Nine Hills Road, Kayler Bridge Road, Viola View, Pear Tree Lane, and Pear Tree Court. So with that, I would recommend awarding the base bid to Jefferson Asphalt for this project.
Matt, could you just read the, I think the difference is somewhere around $17,000, but the total bids are?
Yes, sir. The low bid was $730,279.72, and Jefferson's was $747,771.85.
A difference of about 3% or something like that?
Thereabouts, yes.
Yes.
It was just slightly over, it was about 17.5 is the difference.
I think you talked to all the commissioners.
We've kind of had.
And I bow to your opinion, because you do this every day. We don't, so.
Could we repeat that when Sheriff gets in here?
So, when we talked last week, though, we were going to try to get some instances and stuff of.
And I do have all that laying on my desk, Jeff. I can get that to you if you'd like.
Because I just, if we've had problems, and, you know, I really don't mind taking that in consideration, but I'd really like to have our ducks in a row, so when they come to us and say, hey, you know, we were the lowest bid, we're just not going to bid it anymore if that's the way it's going to be. I think we're going to lose people that way. And, you know, if we do have problems, I think there's got to be an opportunity for them to fix it as well.
And Eric and I have discussed that, and we do have some, a game plan in place, so to speak, when they come to us to say, all right, if this is the case, what do we need to do to rectify the situation, so. But as far as documentation goes, I do have it laying on my desk. I can put that together and send it to you if you'd like, just so you can.
Well, I mean, we had it on the agenda last week, and we punted it to this week, and I really wanted to take a look at that stuff, and I mean, I'm going to vote no on it for now if we go with Jefferson without seeing that information, but that's what it's based on, so.
Matt and I further discussed it last Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday afternoon, and he went through the particulars of the issues, and so I'm prepared to vote for it, to award the bid to Jefferson Asphalt today.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll make, give you the dollar amount again.
Take it.
I'll make a motion to award the Cod Construction Contract for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay Program, project number 2024-501-1, to Jefferson Asphalt, for the amount of $747,771.85.
I will second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, bid award, 2024-13 Cleaning Services for Public Works.
We've been off the cleaning services at Public Works, and we have two vendors submit a response, Classic Cleaning, Cleaning, and CD Varied Janitorial. Our recommendation is going to be to award it to Classic Cleaning, in the amount of $21,360.64 annually. They do currently do the cleaning out of Public Works, and I've been pleased with them over the years.
You got them bid tabs, because we don't have them attached to the agendas anymore, so.
I know you sent them to us before, but I didn't pull up that.
There's a difference of about $23,000 between Classic Cleaning and the lowest bid.
I'll make a motion to award the Cleaning Services Contract to Classic Cleaning of, at the amount of $21,360.64.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of the Cardinal Glennon Hospital STARS Program Agreement.
Good morning.
Did you do the Viola View?
Oh, I see. Well, go ahead, yeah. No, 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 you're seated. Sorry about that.
No problem. So, this is a renewal of our agreement with Cardinal Glennon, the STARS program, and what this is, is a portal that allows us to have access to the medical records of patients with special needs, pediatric patients with special needs. A lot of these pediatric patients suffer from congenital disease and often need specialized care outside of what our providers are used to. So this portal allows the family and the patient's physician to go in and upload and share information that is pertinent if we were to need to respond and provide care to that individual. This was started under my predecessors, so I don't know a lot about the terms. It's a little bit difficult because it was sent in an e-sign to the presiding commissioner, so I don't think.
I haven't seen it.
I haven't, I haven't seen it either, so you might check with Deputy Chief.
So, I think what we need to do today is, I would add, just ask for a motion pending, to approve pending legal review, and then we'll figure out the IT and how to get the e-sign and all of that figured out.
Good.
Well, we have to figure out how the clerk's going to attest to it.
Correct. Yeah, so there's a few things that we need to jump through, but if you just.
But we can approve it pending the legal review, and then give Sam the authority to sign it, whenever you all get the rest of it figured out, so.
I'll do it.
Okay.
There is no cost, there is, it's just a dash area.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Cardinal Glennon Hospital STARS Program Agreement, pending the approval of the, of our attorney, and the determination on how to electronically sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I apologize, Matt. We'll go back to bid award, 2024-201-1, Viola View Stormwater Improvements.
So, this project, we opened bids on Friday, April 26th, and Stockman Construction red low. There were a total of five bids. Their bid was $63,425, and the engineer's estimate was $86,500. And this project involves widening, adding curb and gutter, and replacing crossword pipes at the intersection of Viola View and Sterling Ridge in Van Leeuwa Estates subdivision, and Public Works Department recommends awarding the base bid for this project.
Good. I'll make a motion to award the Viola View Stormwater Improvement to Stockman Construction for $63,425.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you get ahold of the other ones down there on Sterling?
They did not call me yet, but that's on my list of things to do today or tomorrow.
Okay, I know one of them will probably be calling you in a day or two if they don't hear from you, but, yep, that's a whole separate, different project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Approval and signing of amendment for 2023-16 Replacement of Annex Building HVAC System.
This is just an amendment to change the start date for the Annex project with United Mechanical Services. The original date was February 1st, and per grade, we need to start that August 1st, because there were some delays with getting the materials and supplies up.
Yeah, I want to make sure we got everything here before we start messing with our HVAC, air conditioning, it'd be, it could be terrible.
I think it's going to be a steamy summer in this building.
I hope not.
I mean, it's, it was already a little uncomfortable days last week, wasn't it? But it is what it is.
Yeah, between seasons is the worst, but if it's totally off in August, that could be an issue. We may want to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, do they want to start it after August 1st, instead of the middle of the heat in August? Or are we just giving them until August to get their equipment here, get their ducks in a row?
Right now, per grade, it's August 1. I think we need to change that if we can, because we just originally had it February 1st, 180 days to complete the whole project, so I think we need to change it in the future as long as you guys are okay with it. I think we could do that, as long as it worked with United Mechanicals.
I was saying, we need to look at not shutting it off in the middle of August, or in August, but I'm, I'm fine with this to keep things moving.
Does it say August 1? Can we say on or before August 1?
Yeah, it says, shall commence on August 1st, so that's when they start their counting days, and I guess that's the most important thing, and if it's just grueling hot, and they don't want to start till September 1st, or maybe even October, when it's milder, it might be better.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we could probably always amend the start date.
Bring it back closer to you.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Right now, we're just waiting on more equipment and materials.
And I don't know if they're completely shutting everything down at one time or not, so.
He said floor by floor, which I don't know what that means.
I got told four by four.
So.
So as long as it's not our floor when they're in August.
Everybody will be up here working in our hallway then. Yeah, Mark, you.
Start upstairs.
Hey, now, you tell the prosecutor that you said that, not us. Okay.
They'll want us whatever we need to do.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the amendment for the replacement of the Annex Building HVAC System with United Mechanical Services with a commencement date of August 1st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay. New business, Accounts Payable Review.
Yes, I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number Five.
This is for the Juvenile Center, it's $3,000. They received a grant, it's called Juvenile Education Incentive, so I'd ask for approval of those ordered today, so we can adjust the budget.
Good. All right, I'll make a motion to sign Budget Adjustment Number Five for the Juvenile Education Incentive for $3,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Change Order Number One for the Friendship Road Box Culvert Improvements.
So, this is the final closeout document, Change Order for the Friendship Road Box Culvert Improvements, and it is with GWH Landscape Contracting. We had additional cost on the amount of Type 1 aggregate for base, Class 4 excavation in rock, and Class B 1 concrete needed to complete the project, and we used lesser silt fence for a lesser amount of work. And there was one change to remove two large trees that were likely to die due to the project. Overall, this change order has an increase in the cost of construction by $34,688.63.
Where does that put us on the total of that project that's still under the engineer's estimate?
Yes, sir, it is.
So, that went really good. We got it open, too.
Yeah, we opened that road last week, and I have made contact with the bus service, so that should help the school out for the rest of the year, even though it's a couple more weeks, but total cost of the project, we're looking at $237.97, $917.30, which, if I remember correct, the engineer's estimate was three and a quarter, so we're still below that part of it.
Okay, good. Make a motion to sign Change Order Number One for Friendship Road Box Culvert Improvements for the amount of $34,688.63.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of Change Order Number One for the County Park Parking Lot Improvements.
So, this is the final closeout document, Change Order for this project. We had additional Type 5 aggregate for base, an extra length of 12-inch SDR 35 PVC drain pipe, 4-inch blue pavement marking paint, and Type 2 rock blanket in order to complete the project, and then we had lesser amounts of 6-inch concrete pavement, 6-inch sidewalk, and 4-inch yellow pavement marking paint. And there was one change on this project also, to remove a couple trees and some extra concrete near the parking lot. Overall, this change order will increase cost of construction by $10,762.72. And if I remember correct, this is less than what the engineer's estimate was also.
We like that.
So, but that project is complete. I've talked to the inspectors, the grass is growing really well, and even the last few rains we've had, everything's holding in place, and everything looks really good out there. Towards the end of May, we are looking at having a ribbon cutting to officially open it, so I will make sure you all are invited also for that.
County Park, a lot of people don't know we have County Parks, but it's beautiful there, and it's.
Yeah, and our Parks Department does a great job of keeping that maintained and everything, and hopefully this project will be a long-lasting project, as far as getting rid of the gravel parking lot, make it easier to keep everything maintained out in that area also, so.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve and sign Change Order Number One, County Park Parking Lot Improvement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, County Assessor, 2024-2025 Assessment Maintenance Plan. I received this last week, and it needs to be into the State Tax Commission by May 1st, so it requires all three of our signatures. Our assessor signed it on 12/31/2023, but as I said, I just received it last week. I do want to read, our assessors had an ongoing, had ongoing issues with the State Tax Commission, and we received an email on April 26th from Larry Jones with the State Tax Commission, and it said, Chris, thanks for sending over the revised narrative. The State Tax Commission feels like we are making progress, but you have not presented a clear, concise breakdown of your plans to advance toward fair market values for the 2025 reassessment. The other information you give concerning your viewpoints are fine, and it gives us an idea of what is going on in your office, but it does not outline your plans to regress towards market value. As for the 2022, 23 versus 2024, 25 narratives, since you are currently under a memorandum of understanding and low ratio studies indicate the market continues to increase, we simply need more details on how your county plans to regress in 2025. But I would like to, to ask that we sign this today, so at least we get it in by May 1st to the State Tax Commission. Yeah.
On there, the date we received it, if you might sustain.
Yeah, this is, I received it on April 25th. See if I have a copy of that email from our assessor.
I don't know what we're signing, because it's not accepted by them yet. He sent you an email, by the way, he's required by state statute. The assessor shall prepare and submit a two-year maintenance plan to the county governing body and to the State Tax Commission, on or before 1-1-24. He sent you an email. You are not the governing body. The three of us are the governing body. Eastern District and Western District has never received that from him, so he hasn't, he's failed to provide it to the governing body. His narrative that he put with it was, was soundly rejected by the State Tax Commission because it was, because it was, and he wanted to know why, and I get these because you do forward those emails to me, Sam, thank you. I find out that, and I talked to Larry Jones yesterday and two other folks at the State Tax Commission, they're meeting right now as we speak, as a matter of fact, but, but Cole County is not on their agenda today, so they're not going to address this on or before May 1. He wanted, Mr. Estes wanted to know why the narrative that he gave them two years ago couldn't just be repeated basically again this year. What has changed? And Mr. Jones told him what has changed is, you failed the sales ratio study, and you then executed an MOU 15 months later, it took him 15 months to execute an MOU, memorandum of understanding. That's what's changed. And that MOU, as both of you know, our assessor is telling the State Tax Commission that because he failed the sales ratio study on January 1 of '25, when he still will be in office, even though he may not be reelected because his term runs through September of next year, that he's going to raise half of the county residences by 13%, and he's going to raise the other half that he tapped on last year by 6% to 7%. I think the public needs to know that. So, you know what? I'm going to refuse to sign today at this moment until I visit again with the State Tax Commission about the maintenance plan. And he already put in jeopardy or reimbursed from, from the State Tax Commission last year in 2023 because of his failure to execute an MOU. They told him in October of '23, we need an MOU. It finally got executed in February of '24, and we finally got our '23 money in '24. Now, our '24 money is at risk because of his actions on this maintenance plan, so I'm not signing it today at this moment.
So, why would they sign it if it's not an acceptable plan either? Because they've got.
They haven't signed it.
For their signature.
They haven't signed it, they haven't accepted it.
I guess that's my question. I'm along the same lines as you, exactly are we signing here? Is it just, uh?
Going back to an email from March 26th of 2024, uh, Larry Jones, uh, says, state statutes require your assessment maintenance plan be submitted, honor before January 1st, 2024, to the state tax commission and to your county governing body, which is the three of us. Additionally, uh, 137-750 RSMO requires compliance with the plan before state reimbursement funds may be released. If an agreement is not reached concerning your 2024, 2025 maintenance plan by May 1st, which is tomorrow, 2024, it could affect your quarterly reimbursement monies. As always, the state tax commission is willing to work with you, and if we can be of any assistance during this process, please, please feel free to call us. Respectfully, Larry Jones. So that's why I was saying, you know, May 1st is kind of a.
I'm not saying I'm not, I won't sign it today, but I will not sign it this moment, and I'm gonna wait until I talk to Larry Jones this afternoon from the state tax commission, who they're meeting, as I say, right now, they moved their meeting up from 1:30 to 9:00 AM this morning.
If we don't get it signed today, then is that gonna affect, it says it can affect our quarterly payment.
That's my question to Larry, and I don't think.
It hinges on him getting an acceptable plan in.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, even if you all would sign it, if it's not acceptable to the state tax commission, that wouldn't make any difference.
And this is over, roughly over $100,000.
117 a year ago.
In monies that, that the county should be receiving.
Sam, when he sent you that, that first email at 6:30 PM on a Saturday, the 29th, I'm sorry, the 30th of December on a Saturday at 6:30 PM, that's when he sent it to you. It was due on the following Monday, which was the 1st of January. He did attach a signature page, and it was blank. He later sent you a signature page where he dated it on the 31st and said that it was with the first time around, but it really wasn't, and so that's what we have. We have a, uh, blank signature page, a photocopy of one, I guess.
There wasn't a signature page on the, on the email sent on the 31st.
There was a blank one there. I found it this morning.
You did find that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Two years ago.
We may not hear you if you're not up there.
Yeah.
Two years ago, we went through this same scenario, um, and actually, he didn't submit, it took months for him to submit an acceptable narrative. The commission finally signed the signature page in September, and when you sent it over, it was accompanied by a letter signed by the three of you discussing the content of the assessor's narrative, which essentially consisted of bashing the commission for staffing and budget, and then alleging a number of problems with the DevNet system. That was, that was forwarded to DevNet, and DevNet composed a response refuting all the assessor's allegations, and that was included with the county commission's letter. This time, the narrative is essentially like it was two years ago. It's the same, um, series of complaints about staffing and DevNet. DevNet has, has responded to that, and their vice president has written a letter responding to each of the assessor's claims, and I think it would probably, if you're going to sign that, it might be a good idea to do the same thing again this, this year, which is write a letter, the commission is signing this because we need to, to sign this in order to get our reimbursement, however, do not construe our signatures as an agreement with what the assessor is claiming in his narrative. So do you want to, want to do that again this time?
I like that idea.
I, I did too.
I don't know what this obligates us to necessarily, if anything, but I do like putting something in writing like, said like we did before, saying we're, we're signing this because we really need to, but we're not agreeing to everything that's in it.
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm very comfortable with having our Western District Commissioner speak with the state tax commission today, and, uh, if we get answers, we can, we can sign it later today or tomorrow.
I don't want to get too much into weeds with that narrative, counselor, but among other things, he criticizes the commission for failing to execute a high enough budget so that he can go and, and hire other folks, and in fact, in March of this year, he did find, or at least someone found him and said they wanted to come to work here at a, at an off, at a, a budget line that was, uh, at $50,000, and Chris sent the, the salary paper over for 55, and we accepted that. We're, we're willing to go there, we're on record that says you go find a qualified, and this was a registered, uh, maybe the, only the second one in his office, a registered licensed appraiser, who has, he has that with the state, but he wanted 55, and we all three said, yes, hire him.
Well, I think that should be included. The commission has expressed that you are willing to, um, pay a reasonable salary for a qualified individual. You know, the, the problem is, is, is qualified individuals don't seem to want to apply for jobs over there, but, um, it's a falsehood in that narrative that the county commission is not going to work with him on salary budget. And, and I would include that in that letter.
We have told him budget hearings for, gosh, probably at least the last eight years, that, that we were not going to put the salaries in his budget, but if he would find qualified people, we would fund them. So as Western District Commissioner Rado says, he did find someone, I think, who's a certified appraiser from New Mexico, and, and we, we hired him, so.
He appropriated the funds.
Yes, we are not, yeah, we are not sitting on money and that he can't, he just needs to find the, the qualified people to fill these slots.
So do we want to work on then and reconvene this afternoon at 3 o'clock?
Or sooner.
Or whenever.
Because I think there, the, the state tax commission meetings only last for an hour or so, so I think they'll be out of there before 11.
I don't think it's, if you don't sign it by May 1st, the May 1st deadline is for the assessor to get in an acceptable plan, and, unless and until the state tax commission accepts a plan, your signing that page really isn't going to matter.
Yeah.
As I said, two years ago, it was in September, so.
And two years ago, our reimbursement was also delayed.
But it was delayed because.
It came in before the end of the year, unlike this past one, which came in the following year, but it was delayed, but yeah, I know it didn't come in as soon as it normally.
Mark, the reason why it was delayed is because they did not accept his narrative.
Right. We got, we, we've gotten a whole amount, both years.
Right.
And they've both been delayed, so, but.
It took months.
I would expect this year might be delayed as well, but that's, that's fine, it's, I mean.
They tried to work with him over several months on getting that in an acceptable form.
I just want to point that out.
Right.
The reimbursement was delayed two years ago as well, but we got the whole amount.
I mean, the narrative is just a bunch of excuses is what all it was, it doesn't say anything about what he's gonna do, what he's gonna try to, you know, work with the commission to fix these things, I mean, even if he doesn't like the programming, there's other, uh, assessors across the state that have used DevNet and to great success, and it, it actually is great for mass appraisal, which is, looks like it's what needs to be done, so.
As of about a week ago, the 115 assessors in Missouri have all submitted a two-year maintenance program. Four have been incomplete. Cole County is one of the four incomplete. Only one first-class county is incomplete, Cole County. So our assessor has made the final four, but it's not the top four.
Well, I would, I would direct that you talk to the state tax commission and, uh, get back with, with your fellow commissioners, and we will, uh, move forward, hopefully, or we will not, so.
All right.
Yeah, I'd see what they say, then if nothing else, we get a letter together and we submit it with it like we did before.
Okay. Anything else?
So we're gonna try to do that later today, or?
Yeah.
I have a 3 o'clock, but I can't.
Well, we will, we will do something today to protect the interests of Cole County with respect to the reimbursement. How's that?
You wanna kind of set a time and just, uh, we can.
It's so.
For the clerk and Alex.
Okay.
Whoever else.
Well, let's, let's try 11 first.
Okay.
So when we adjourn here, we'll, uh, stand in recess, or not adjourn, but stand in recess until 11. How's that?
Yep, that gives you enough time, that's fine. Sam has something at 3, I've got other stuff that's flexible, so.
All right.
Okay. Do we have anything else to come before the commission?
I don't think so.
I move we stand in recess until, uh, 11 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are we, are we up and running?
We're up and running.
Okay, we will go back into open session. It is Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, and this is discussion of the assessor's maintenance plan agreement and approval signing of.
Okay, after we adjourned or went into recess earlier, I tried to log into the state tax commission meeting, but I believe the meeting is over, I was the only one there.
Maybe I better repeat that because I wasn't on, didn't have my microphone on. So after this morning's meeting, I tried to log on to the state tax commission meeting. I was the only one there, the other ones were already gone, so that was probably shortly after we, uh, paused this morning. I called Larry Jones, uh, no answer, but I left a message. Do we have to sign today? Are there other exceptions? I have not heard back from him. So, given all of that, I suggest we use, uh, the wise counsel of our attorney to draft the language that we feel comfortable with that says we are signing this on this date. We have not had, we only received it this, within the last X days, um, in spite of the December 31 date signed by the, allegedly signed by the assessor, and we do not, um, we have the same reservations we previously had two years ago.
I, I think what we probably, okay.
Yeah.
Um, the letter should probably do is, is focus on the fact that, um, his narrative contains, um, first of all, it's not compliant with what the law says it's supposed to be, which is what was included in the letter two years ago, but also focusing on the fact that, um, the county commission signing of the signature page does not indicate that you agree with what the assessor has included in that narrative letter. I'd point out that mo, most of it has been spent complaining about staffing, it should be, um, you know, I'm just kind of rambling here, um, the commission would like to, like to state that we have been, we have assured the assessor that we are willing to pay a reasonable salary for qualified people if his office is able to attract them. In addition, there have been a number of allegations regarding the DevNet service, which have been referred to DevNet, and attached is a letter from the vice president of whatever it is at DevNet addressing those claims, and then just kind of leave it at that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, we obviously want to get the funding.
Correct.
Right. And, and, you know, if they accept his, it, we will eventually, as Mark pointed out, we didn't get it in a timely manner last time, but we did eventually get it.
Right.
Um, and he has done a revised narrative, which is not revised much, and, and none of the, um, arguments about staffing and DevNet have changed, those are all the same. So whether he revises it or not, um, I think those are really what the county commission, and you know, the, I mean, the, the claims about DevNet could be considered defamation, and we sure don't want to be on record as having, not having a problem with one, one of our elected officials defaming one of our vendors.
Right.
Well, this agreement says the assessor will assess all taxable property in the county uniformly and at a statutorily required percentage of market value for their respective property. The actions of the assessor and staff will comply with the requirements found in Article 10, Section 3 of the state constitution. So this is what he is, has signed, that he will comply, so, um, and then it, uh, it is hereby affirmed by the county that an assessment fund has been established, and that the general revenue funds required of this plan will be deposited into the assessment fund. So that is what we are signing.
I, uh, I wish to make a motion to proceed with, uh, signing, uh, the, each of us sign the 2024, 2025 Assessment Maintenance Plan Agreement and Approval, subject to the, the terms and conditions that were outlined by our attorney.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll put together a letter.
Okay. Do we have any other issues to come before us?
Nope.
Motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dawn.